Good evening everyone, a very warm welcome to all of you to this special session on Integrated Business Solutions. Paper organized by Board of Studies academic. Today we will take you through some quick insight about airlines industry. Which is one of the most dynamic and strategically complex sector especially in India. Air travel here is not just a means of transportation, its connectivity, aspiration. And a driver of economic growth. Globally, the aviation is valued at over eight fifty billion dollars. And in India is among the fastest growing aviation markets. In fact, India is expected to become the third largest aviation market globally in the coming years. Growth is driven by rising middle class income reasonably. Connectivity and increasing affordability of air travel. What's equally interesting is the shift we are seeing from traditional full service airlines to low cost airlines. That appeals strongly to cost conscious travels travelers. There are three trends I would like to highlight, first is digitization, digitalization. Customers today prefer mobile bookings, self check-in, AI driven chatbots. And real time flight updates, digital innovation is redefining passengers experience. Loyalty management and operational efficiency. Second is sustainability, airlines are under pressure to reduce carbon footprints. From adopting fuel efficient aircrafts to exploring sustainable aviation fuel. The industry is moving towards greener operations. Shift third is shift to low cost models carrier like Indigo. Have has expanded aggressively by offering affordable fares and high frequency routes challenging. Full service players such as Air India. To understand how strategy work in practice, let us look Southwest Airlines of United States. It pioneered the low cost carrier model, keeping operations simple, its operations are very, very simple. Only single, only one type of aircraft that is Boeing seven three seven. Quick turnaround time at airport, no frill services and a strong culture of employee engagement. By focusing relentlessly on cost efficiency and customer satisfaction. Southwest Airlines consistently profitable in an industry where bankruptcies are very common. Its model has inspired lot of low cost air lines at global level even in India also. Another another fascinating case comes from Qantas, Qantas Airways Australia, Qantas. Was one of the first airlines. To link its CEO's compensation directly to the balanced scorecard framework. Instead of paying bonuses purely on financial metrics, it considers non-financial factors also. Okay, uh remuneration is mixed type of, it considers financial performance. Like revenue growth, cost reduction, shareholder returns, customer outcomes like loyalty scores. On time performance, operational excellence like safety, fuel efficiency, reliability. And regarding people and culture, it considers like employee engagement, training and retention ratio. This holistic approach ensured that the leadership team didn't chase profits. At cost of safety, service or employee moral. It's a clear example of how corporate governance and strategy execution can align to create sustainable performance. In the airline industry, of course, the sector faces challenges. Volatility in fuel prices, currency fluctuations and intense fear was affects profitability at significant level. Regulatory requirements like DGC norms, airport slot allocations and taxation add further complexity. The industry is highly highly competitive with thin margins. Making it difficult for airlines to balance cost efficiency with customer service excellence. But the opportunities are equally strong, India's growth, India's government is pushing regional connectivity. Schemes like like which scheme, Udaan scheme, opening up two entire three city routes. Uh and even in international markets, they are they are also planning some. Uh global alliances and code sharing arrangements offer Indian Indian carriers to access for international markets. More over technologies like predictive maintenance, AI driven scheduling and data analytics. For route optimization are transforming how airlines operate and compete. In our previous session, we explored a variety of real world industries. To understand how strategic and compliance alignments are interrelated. In fast fashion sector, we examined how lean supply chain and short production cycle drive competitiveness. In jewelry industry, jewelry industry showed us how tradition branding and compliance with hallmarking regulation shapes growth. Similarly, T sector in T sector gave us a view of agri based supply chain. FMCG companies, we discussed role about branding, customer insights and fast moving logistics networks. In transportation, we saw app based logistics are transforming delivery models and public mobility solutions. Through each of these examples, we have reinforced a critical insight, strategic decisions cannot be viewed in isolation. They must be assessed through a holistic lens that includes financial viability, regulatory compliances. Through regulatory compliances, risk assessment and value creation, this is the essence of this paper. Nurturing professionals who can connect strategy with substance and performance with purpose. Today we bring interesting case study from the case study digest volume two. This case study brings together a blend of accounting, taxation, strategic issues. As well as corporate law issues, especially it touches upon in AS one zero five. Addressing the classification and disclosure requirements when a business unit or set of assets is held for sale. The company's act twenty thirteen provisions, particularly the provisions relating to remuneration payable to managerial person. That's why I try to connect with you, remuneration of CEOs of Qantas Airlines, okay. Uh next, this case study discussed with you multi-brand strategy and relevant costing principle. Examine how organization evaluate whether to continue, discontinue or divest a brand based contribution analysis etcetera. In AS one one six, dealing with recognition and measurement of assets, lease, lease is very, very important in case in airlines industry. Yes, further, we are going to discuss section one ninety four, I of Income Tax Act folks focusing on TDS. Okay, through this case study, students, you will be able to appreciate how strategic financial regulatory. And tax consideration converge in real life business decisions, which is very, very important for this paper. We are privileged to welcome CS Sumit Dada sir, a highly respected chartered accountant to today's session. Despite the peak audit season, he has graciously accepted our invitation to share his expertise. His insights will enable us to connect academic learning with practical applications in business and governance. With this, let us commence today's discussion and explore the case in detail, sir, over to you.
Thank you, thank you Deepak sir, then good evening, good evening fellow participants. On the.
Thank you sir.
Let me start sharing my screen and we can start discussing. Now. So. Integrated business solution means that we don't look things only from one lens, we look from multiple angles. Every every decision you take has not only one site, it has multiple facets in business. And therefore, as a as a consultant, as a professional, when we are on a decision making chair, I need to look into various aspects. Today we are going to talk about airlines industry, before I run through each slide. Let us first understand few basics of insurance in the airlines industry, very basics first. Now according to you, any idea, how much, how many people fly average a day, average approximately in India? We are just taking Indian context first. Average, you think this number of people flies per day? Yeah, and thank you Samanathan and everyone, happy teachers day to all, because everyone is a teacher, we all learn from each other. Any approx thought somebody has, how many people fly approximately per day in India, approximate, any range? You just remove one zero out of it, that was the answer, so approx five lakh people fly a day, approx one one side. So on average, we say we fly one million per day, because it's two and four, five million one side and assuming there somebody will be also taking a return journey same day. So generally it is said that we one million per day, that is ten lakh per day is people fly. How much is and how many flights it fly? How many flights you think generally flies a day? Prox, so it is thirty one hundred flights, approx a day it flies across India. Now, if you want to understand the challenges of this, so first of all. How many, how many profitable airlines we have in India as of today? As we speak today, just now as we speak for this quarter, assuming June quarter numbers. How many profitable airlines you think we have? Any vague thoughts? So we have, we have so many airlines in India, right? We have Air India, Air India Express, we have Vistara. We have Akashia, we have Indigo, we have Spice that, so how many are profitable, all, okay? Anybody has other any view, so I got one view that all airlines are profitable, they are making money as of today. Anybody has a different view? So we have only one airline profitable as of today, can we talk as of today, March twenty five or June quarter twenty five. Only one airline is profitable, any idea which airline it is? Which airline you think become profitable airline? Indigo. Indigo, so only Indigo is the profitable airlines as of today, all are into losses and the irony is. Whatever is the profit of Indigo, the loss of Air India is higher than that. So you can imagine, we are talking of two extreme businesses, North Pole and South Pole, so if. So if Indigo is making a profit of eight thousand crore rupees, Air India is making a loss of ten thousand crore rupees. That's a perspective I am giving, how difficult this industry is and why dynamics plays an important role. But before that, what are the challenges you foresee in this business? If you want to put a setup a, if you want to set up airline industry or just starting with one plane, two plane, ten planes. What are the challenges you see in this business? And see whenever we start any business or when we go for any business to deal with, we need to know pros and cons, we need to know all sides. Then only you can take an informed decision, whether you are making money or not, it cannot be just guaranteed on day one. But at least there should be certain factors which I should be aware that okay, these are the challenges which I am going to face it. So which risks you can manage, which you know there is this is the risk that can be managed. Something you don't know, you can't manage, so I know that okay, these are certain factors which are very relevant in this industry. So I should be aware of this industry before I put my neck out on this, but the moment I start industry and say, oh, I never knew. This is also a problem in this, this is also a problem in this, then your business will not work out longer. So any quick thoughts, anybody is, what are the challenges in this industry generally? Generally what challenges, cost of airplane, so we will start with first getting license. So getting license is not easy, so first is getting license is the most toughest part, where that requires lot of regulatory approval and all. Because government is giving you a. A right to fly and it includes lot of concerns, safeties. So first of all, getting right to license is the biggest thing, but you need to, that was big network. Assuming you crack the network part, you got the license, now comes the assets. Then you need to get license, so so like, have you ever seen, have you ever seen? MNC banks opening branches in remote villages also sometimes. MNC banks. So initial investment is very absolutely right, high operating cost, regulatory environment, absolutely. So what happens in MNCs, any idea why some MNC would have you opening office in remote villages? Or let's say one branch they will open in Mumbai, one branch they will open in let's say a tier three city, any idea, why did they do that? Because it's a compulsion by government, the government mandates. That if you want to take a banking license and you want to take a approval for opening a branch in particular city, let's say Delhi, Bombay, Hyderabad. Any tier one city, you need to open similar branch in a in a less developed area. Why this is mandatory? So let's say if if I want to take a, I get a license per sector, right? So let's say Delhi to Mumbai sector would be the most profitable sector to fly, so I'll get a license there. But what about Delhi to Gaya, Patna, will I be interested to open a flight there? Delhi to Mumbai, I get hundred percent capacity full, the flight always goes for Delhi to Mumbai. Delhi to Patna, I may get twenty percent, thirty percent, will I be interested? Probably no, I may not be interested, so if I will not be interested, nobody else will be investing there. And nobody else will invest there, then these sectors will never ever develop. So the so the residents of these sectors of these cities, which is a tier three cities will always be in the struggle. So therefore government mandates, okay, if you are taking a license from one profitable route. You need to open in a one less profitable route, so to compensate, so entire country can be served at the same time, that's the logic they have. Now this industry has one of the first biggest challenges is the biggest cost is of your. Planes, that's the biggest cost, now. What model you think all industries follow, they purchase or they lease, what do you think? Which business model you think we should go? Lease, so it's mandatory, everybody goes for lease model. Why we prefer going for lease, because. In a lease. Because if I buy something. And two years later I realize, I don't think I am fit for this industry or India is not matured for rail age industry, I need to exit. Then will I get a right buyer to sell my planes or I will be selling at a huge loss? I will be selling at a huge loss, because there will be no enough buyers, but these are not enough players. I can, I can count on my fingers, the airlines industry operating in India. I can easily count on fingers, so when there are number of people are very less, when the players are very less, I will not get a better demand and supply. So I will not be able to exit at a right price, therefore we all go for lease, because in a lease. I can decide if I am making money, I will continue lease, if I not, there will be a breakage clause, whatever terms you have, you can exit the lease. So that's where they go for and and the business and the biggest. And the biggest item in the balance sheets you will generally find is ROU of these airlines industry, that's what we find. Now. So which model you think you should prefer, shall I have? Multiple models like I will have Boeing seven seven, Airbus and ATRs. So one model, so which kind of industry you think you will prefer, where I will, I have a. Two hundred seater plane and I have a fifty sixty seater plane also. Will it make difference in this or it does not make any difference in having a different models or having a different models has impact on business? What do you think? It makes difference, okay, now. One of the biggest challenge, one of the biggest challenge in different models, one of the biggest different managers will be required. More than maintenance, Chitra, more than maintenance, the biggest challenge is, the biggest challenge is. Can it, can it switch pilots like easily? So let's say, let's take example of Uber, so I have, I have wagon R, I have sedan, I have Mercedes. It will be easy to ship driver, same driver, I can say, okay, I have a driver, this driver will drive wagon R, this driver will. Same driver I can replace to drive Mercedes, same driver I can replace to drive I ten, I twenty, Toyota, I can switch that. Is it easy to switch pilots like this? Okay, this pilot was flying ATR yesterday, today this pilot will fly Boeing seven seven or today this pilot, so this is not permitted at all. If there is a pilot will be flying only one plane, one side of model. He will be allowed only same set of model, you cannot switch that. So now you see the challenge, first of all, we have shortage of pilots. And then in that also, the pilots are based on system operated. It is a plane operator, it cannot be, it is a, for each model, there will be a different pilot, you cannot switch. Now that and and in a plane, minimum how many pilots are always required, minimum? Minimum, how many pilots are always required? Minimum two, so the minimum sizes, you need to minimum two pilots plus, how many minimum crew I need? How many minimum staff I need apart from the two pilots, so two is minimum. No, no, when I say crew means the the stewards, the the one who will be flying in the plane. Twenty would be not even the size of the plane, so I will just give a real example, yesterday I was flying from Jaipur to Chandigarh. In the whole plane, there were six passengers, it was ATR small aircraft, whole plane, there were only six passengers, you can imagine. So six passengers we are has and you will be surprised, the number of staff was equal to that, so. So the mandate requirement by airlines industry is, it needs to have two minimum pilots plus four attendants, so two plus four. Okay, now, does weight of the attendance matters, weight of the staff matters? You know like when the policy is, it should be, you should have, let's say example of seven KG. So you should have seven KG and fifteen KG, there is a luggage weight I am talking, now I am asking, does the weight of person matters? So let's say these two people plus four people, their weight matters or it does not matter? If it matters, any idea, it does not matter, okay? Any idea of proximity, it does not matter, okay? It matters a lot, it matters a lot, there are thirteen airlines and that is the reason why. Many airlines in US and UK had a policy of only hiring females, because as a as a member of crew. Because the weight of a female is slightly lesser than the male body weight. That average weight of six people is generally assumed to be five hundred KG of six people, that is. Which is considered to be approx two percent of the entire airline planes, so that's the. That's the looks part have gone now, now it's only the weight part generally, I will come to the looks part also. So approx five hundred KG, so that and why this weight is important? Any idea why this weight is important, what is the logic of this weight, any logics? So or so approximately it should be a one hundred and hundred thousand kilo plane, why this weight is important? What is the logic of weight and why they insist on seven KG handbag, fifteen KG handbag? To maintain balance, okay, pendulum balance, okay, maybe may not be. Uh now you, now you realize that these days nowadays airlines are too strict on weight, weight baggages. Seven KG, fifteen KG, they are now very strict these days, offlets are becoming very strict, yes, no, maybe? Earlier they were very relaxed, very lenient on these kind of weights, then you carry the luggage weights. Now why these body weights and other wages counts, because the fuel efficiency. The heavy weight, the more fuel utilization, it becomes a huge impact and that is the reason why they are becoming, they are becoming more and more. Uh conscious on weights and also that fuel efficiency could be less. Does, does color of plane also matters on fuel efficiency? Color of plane? Yes, no, maybe? Okay, Chitra, how many, how many colors of plane you would have generally seen, generally? Generally, I am asking. So color of the plane also matters. That's the reason why majority of the airlines, you will see, which color you will see majority of the airlines could be, generally which color you would have seen? White, majority is white and why, why white is majority? Again, these are all signs and these are logical reasoning behind all this, it's not the color of peace. Because dark color will have high heat. And white color will reflect easily, so that will have less consumption of of fuel. So these are certain data sciences based on that, why certain things have been planned like this, it would have worked like this. Now, so these are broad challenges I'm trying to tell you. Apart from that, which are the minimum mandatory costs need to incur on airlines? Apart from the salaries. So let's say, one would be salary of pilots. Whether you fly or not fly, I need to pay. Whether I have ten customers, let's say I have a hundred seater plane. If ten seat, ten passengers fly, I'll still need to give the same salary. If hundred seaters fly, I'll give you the same salary. Apart from this, what are the other charges we need to put in? Airport charges. What kind of airport charges? When you suggest, what do you mean by airport charges? So you're almost there, I understand. What do you mean by airport charges generally? When you say airport charges means? Generally, when you say airport charges, what does it means? Parking charges, license meter, parking charges, right? So every day, somewhere the plane need to go into some hangar. We call it the place hangar where the planes are parked. You cannot fly all the time, somewhere it has need to be grounded. So I need to pay parking charges. Is the parking charges same across India at each airport or different? What do you think? What do you think? Is the airport charges same or different? It varies on each city. And that's why, tell you an example of Indigo. If you see that flight timings, you'll always see the first flight of the Indigo generally flies from the. Generally, it will fly from the from the tier two, tier three city generally, their first flight of the day. And why does it that? Because the parking charges of, let's say, take example of Jaipur, Lucknow, Kanpur, Kishingarh. These are will be much, much cheaper as compared to a parking charge of Delhi, Mumbai, Hyderabad, Chennai, Bangalore. Because in a metro city or a much bigger city, charges will be much higher. And that is the reason they they plan their their they plan their airlines such way that let them park. Last flight should go in such a place where it will be least uh expensive, so that people can use that. So that is one. A- any idea when did the real revolution come in airlines industry? The first revolution came in when Wright brothers said that, okay, something can fly, so they went on this. If I go into, if I go into history, uh if you believe in uh text. So it was the first came in Ramayan. That's the first incidence of flight, you know, the Pushpa Piman is the first. Ever discussed in any is scriptures. After that, what we all saw is Wright brothers in eighteen hundreds where somebody tried to take a plunge that we can fly. After that, when you think becomes the biggest invention in India context? When people accepted, yes, we could also fly. When do you think? Which was the turning point in India where people could have think, yes, you could also fly. Where do you think? No, no, King Fisher changed the way we fly. That is the. King Fisher became the luxury brand. King Fisher become, King Fisher become the most flamboyant flamboyant. Player in the game. King Fisher actually rewritten the rules of luxury. King Fisher defined the luxury, but before King Fisher, the real change came in India was from. Air Dakin. And have you heard the name Air Dakin ever? Air Dakin Airlines. And I'm talking of period, uh so so I'm talking of period where, okay. Do we agree that flying into air is was a luxury at some point of time? A normal, common people could not have afford generally. So middle class people will always try to prefer going by train. That was the best mode in train for third A C would be the preferred mode. They could not even think of flying planes. Plane was supposed to be only by H and I's rich class people. Then came Captain Gopinath of Air Dakin. And what is the first thing he announced? He said, I'll give you flying of, what is the first introductory price he put of flying? Any idea? Which is the marketing, he did a marketing like this. It was a Akshag Kumar movie also recently, few months ba- a few, two, three years back on this issue. Any idea Akshag Kumar and Parashawal movie was there? Where Akshag Kumar was playing Captain Gominalat role and Parashawal was playing J. Airways role. Any idea what was the first introductory price he kept for people to fly? Any weak thought? Any weak thoughts? And at the time, the flying was supposed to be happen at five thousand, six thousand rupees per person. Absolute right, Sanjay. So the first offer he gave to fly at rupee one. You can imagine now, the entire industry was giving at at around. At around uh five to six hundred rupees and he was giving at one rupee. And the moment this news came out, their entire server got crashed. The kind of traffic that reached to their website to book the tickets becomes a huge challenge, huge challenge to make, because nobody there imagined. Because imagine if you uh take an example of, have you heard Freedom Phone? Freedom Phone? There used to be, it was a scam, happened a scam, but have you heard the story of Freedom Phone? Somebody make an announcement that uh that uh I will give you a smartphone at. Two fifty one rupees. Have you heard this? At two fifty one rupees, I'll give a smartphone? What happened? Did people apply it or not apply it? Millions applied, many people applied. No, not reliance. This two fifty one was different. Reliance never give on a phone. Reliance given free internet calling and everything free. Reliance and G O give everything free. But I'm talking of the company called Freedom. It's the name of Freedom. You can just Google later on, get an idea. They announce, I will give you two fifty one rupees phone free. Now imagine. No, it's not not a G O. If I tell a two fifty one reports free, okay? Yeah, so two fifty one reports free. Imagine the lower class people who are not able to afford phones, smartphones. Will they not buy? They start booking their phone, okay? Later it all came, it was all sham and no- nobody got any phone at two fifty one. Comments in that you don't get a phone at two fifty one, but still people apply. Similarly, similarly, where he gave it at one rupee, everybody thought, let us try. I have also taken that flight of one rupee. Was it actually one rupee? Was it actually one rupee or it was not one rupee? What do you think? Because I have also taken this benefit, that's something. Was it actually one rupee or one rupee was a marketing start? It was triple nine. When I said triple nine means was. One rupee was the airline, one rupee was the air decker was charging one rupee. Rest nine ninety eight was the airline passenger fees. There's a passenger fees we need to which every. Every airline need to pay to the operator. So like somebody would be operating at Jaipur Airport, let's say, C I S F. Okay, or Adani Airport, who will be man or like G M Rs, who will be maintaining the airports. They need to collect certain money because I need to provide ground staff, reception, clearing, exit. So there are a lot of ecosystem in this entire airlines industry. So that cost was approx tax. So the government collects a tax on this passenger lady fees. That that was nine ninety eight at that time. So he said, I will charge only one rupee, you give me triple nine, one rupee would be my income. Nine ninety eight I am collecting on behalf of government, which is mandatory. Whether you go into my airlines or you go to King Fisher. This is the minimum you all need to pay. This begins a starting point where middle class or even the the lower income group started thinking we could fly. So if I I used to take a train from Jaipur to Mumbai, which will cost me twelve hundred rupees. And if I uh second A C and if I could pay nine ninety nine and get a get a flight, that would be there. I'll take some points first and then I'll go to slide to run on the concept just to touch an idea. Now, in a in a in a train, how much advance booking you can do for tickets generally? Generally. Any idea? Generally, in advance booking, how much you can do? Ninety days we can do, right? So three months we can do advance booking. In a plane, how much advance booking I can do? Any big thoughts? How much advance booking you think I can do? Six months, six months, okay? Chitra, now I cannot say get an idea, Sarjy. Idea is also got, okay, no ideas. Go to any website, uh spies at Indigo and try to book a ticket, you'll get an idea. So the average timeline is one year. You can book up to one year in advance, not more than that. So every airlines across the globe, not only in India. U S, U K, anywhere in the world you go, one year is the timeline you can book. Now, let's say today is uh fifth September twenty five and I want to book up flight of. Thirtieth August twenty twenty six. I have decided my mind, seen my calendar, holidays are there, so I book. I booked the flight now. What is the challenge in this? Any idea? What is the risk giving a one year advance? What is the risk you think? It has pros and cons. What are the pros and cons? What do you think are the pros and cons? The pros and cons are. You may, no, I'm I'm not looking from a customer point of view. I'm looking from a. Uh that is good for me, Sanjay, if I don't travel. I'll get a cancellation fee. I'm looking from industry point perspective, from airline perspective. So from airlines perspective, what is the pros and cons from airlines perspective? One, the plus side is I get a float. I get a in income in advance, I get a cash in advance, which I'm supposed to give you service later on up to one year. So I got money in advance, the ones one part. What is the second challenge part of this? That's a plus side. What is the negative side? They need to maintain a routine, not necessarily, I can always say due to unforeseen circumstances, you could not fly, they are cancelling. That could be one reason, that could be. But yeah, what you're saying makes sense, but that is not a major showstopper. The biggest challenge is. What if if the with the G S T increases, what if if the with the price of the fuel increases? What if any further changes happens, government increases the P S F price and all? The per person uh amount which the government charges on operator increases. Will I be able to charge customer later on or no? The one who has booked, then you cannot do that. So that's a risk. And that's why they generally do not prefer. And that's the reason they don't go more than one year. Otherwise, what does it make sense? I'm when I'm going, when I'm starting in airlines, I'm supposed to run for long, right? That's my intent to run for long. But then they say, no, do not go more than one year, because one year is, we can visit, we can make some assumptions and we can take a call. So that's what one. Last part on airlines, uh two parts on airlines before then then I'll start moving on P P T. First is, fuel is a major factor which nobody can control. As a airlines, I cannot control fuel prices. It all depends on the top government levels. Right now, we know what 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 drama is going on. Between U S, Russia, India, China. U S says if you buy from this, I'll put a fifty percent tariff, so my cost goes increase and various other things. If I'm getting a cheaper oil from Russia and I need to kind of take care of my country, I'll buy from Russia. If I buy from Russia oil, I can manage my airlines industry, but my other industry gets goes for it also. So the government needs to make certain calls and this price of fuel is a huge challenge. Because we don't have an alternative to fuel as of now. Uh, did we have any any invention in this solar flight, solar plane? What do you think? Do we have any invention in this year? Or no? So fuel is one of the biggest challenge. Did somebody try it for a solar flight? So there is an experiment done on a solar flight where you put a solar panels and the plane will fly. Now you tell me honestly, will the customer will be willing to switch from petrol base to solar planes? As a consumer, if I given a choice? Considering the risk, will I like to take? Probably no. That's the biggest thing. That's the biggest thing because we know there is an alternate, but this experiment can would be a difficult. Challenge and that is the reason one. Second biggest issue is. Can I push my staff to work extra? So let's say you are, let's say you all are interns. Does it happen that, let's say, institute says you need to work whatever hours a month, uh a week, let's say? And in busy season, you'd have worked sixty hours a week. So let's say daily your office timing is, let's say, ten thirty to five thirty, let's say. Does it happen that sometimes your principal would have requested you that, oh, it's a season, or even if you have not requested, you understand it's a busy season, audit season? It's not five thirty, you will be leaving at seven thirty, eight at times. Possible? Happens? Happens. Can I get this done with my airline pilot? Okay, just take two more hour flight and do that. Just finish this one route, we can put this. You can't do that. Any idea why you can't do that? So in a in a C chalega, article I can ask him to stay more, okay? Which is a non urgent working, but I have hundred passengers sitting on my plane. I cannot ask my pilot to take an extra two hours. Any idea why? And you cannot even ask one minute. And exactly this is the reason, they get exhausted and if they get exhausted, it will have a huge toll on lives of entire all passengers. So that's why, that's why you will see many times pilot, the airlines cannot push any pilot to go beyond that and that becomes a huge challenge. So if if there is a plane, a lot of passengers waiting and there is no pilot available at that point of time for whatever reason. What is the biggest cost I have? So there are policies of airlines. If the delay is more than three hours, six hours, I need to give them a hotel. So hotel cost is much, then then food and other stuff I need to, I need to also give them food expenses and all. So this used to become very expensive. And I'm talking of, I'm talking of olden days, not now. I'm talking of period nineteen nine, nineteen nine and two thousand, early two thousand. In early two thousand, ask anybody from your home, who would have ever witnessed a delay in two thousand time? Airlines were giving five star accommodations to all the passengers. Imagine a five star accommodation to the passengers for delay. And that is the reason why the losses of airlines used to multiply huge. I will come on the losses part. We all know the story of Air India. What kind of? Right, so so some so some of them, that's the rule. So more than three years, they need to give food. And if it is more than six years, mandatory they need to give a, they need to give accommodation, that's a mandate given. Now. So let me first go through the slides and then we'll discuss on the, we'll discuss on the going to go financials also, just to touch base. So we are in our example, if those who have you seen the rent the case studies, this is a case we have. Y N Airlines. Now we need to decide strategically what we want. In this airlines, this company has headquartered in Mumbai. It operates as a full service airlines till twenty twenty four. And it focus was only on premium flying experience. We used to be only focused on premium flying. Like for example, King Fisher, King Fisher was only premium flying. Even the, and I am, anybody would have got a chance to visit, to take the benefit of King Fisher Airlines at that time. Even the economy, economy class of King Fisher was equivalent to a business class of a. Go Indigo or or uh Go Air or Spy Z. So the kind of luxury, the comfort in the uh King Fisher gave was a different class. Now, it was operated as a full service airlines and was only specific working for certain sectors. Their main target was luxury segment. Why luxury segment was target? Because there are certain routes where people like to fly for luxury. And they said, let us our business model would be only to work on those areas, do not go for tier two, tier three cities, because that will not give us revenue. So let's say luxury sectors would be Shrinagar or Andman Nikober, Gangtok. Where there is a serene beauty and and people like to, who like to spend much, would like to go there. So this, number of groups are limited, so they are exclusively flying on that. And this routes fly from Mumbai and Delhi. So that's why they had a huge full luxury segment profitable. Now, Indian tourists generally would like to go places which are. When and when we are talking of uh rich class people, they would like to go places. Where do you think they would like to go places which are full of people or less crowd? What do you think? They would like to go full of people or less crowd. That's why, that's why if you see in this list, Shimla, Manali was not there. Because everybody would, on the weekend will say, in every N C L people, on the weekend will say, okay, let's take a car and go to Manali, go to Shimla, which is nearby. So these all places are flock of people where you don't get a peace. Why I take a break? Why I take a leave? When I want to travel, do I want a peace of mind or I want to have same struggle which I'm having in my normal? A peace of mind or I want to have same struggle which I'm having in my normal life? I want a serene beauty, I want a peace of life, nobody is going to disturb me. So it is, you can rejuvenate with yourself. And therefore, areas like Gangtok, uh, Gangtok, Andman, Lakshmi, these are less untouched areas. Less of people, less crowd, expensive, but again you get value for money. No, when we say value for money does not mean the cheapest. Value for money never means cheapest. Value for money means, when I'm paying some price and traveling to. Cities like this and I get a peace of mind, for me, this is a value for money. Value for money does not mean I got the cheapest flight, but its flight is full of. Crowd and where I go, I cannot even, like you go to a filter and you don't even uh get a chance to sit more than. Two minutes, then it's waste of energy, you know? You spend so much money to fly to Paris, go on the crowd and two minutes they are thrown out of that. Structure. So their customer class was mainly into exotic destinations. Their customer segme- segment which prefers exotic destinations, they don't mind paying high. Because when I am a luxury traveler, I have a high disposable income. When you have a high disposable income, I will not look for a. I will not look for a, a discount or cheap uh work. Because when you, when a H and I or when a, when a person with high disposable income look for a flight. He will look for the cheapest or he will look for the comfort. So let's say there is a flight from Jaipur to Srinagar, which is a direct flight. It will cost ten thousand rupees. And there is a flight from Ja- from Jaipur to Delhi to Srinagar, which is indirect flight, but costing. Eight thousand rupees. Which one should I prefer? If I'm a ultra H and I or luxury disposable, will I look for the cheapest one or I look for the convenience one? Where the flight is, or I have a flight at four o'clock in the morning, which is the cheapest flight. Or I will look for a eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning flight, which is expensive but convenient flight. So we need to see when people have a different view, when if I. If I am a middle-class income or a low-income group, I will always look for the cheapest one, because I will say, okay, what's the harm in going into? Uh, one layover, I need to sit at the airport only, so let me go for the cheapest flight. But if I am an H and I, for me, time would be the money, I will look for direct flight and convenience. So if I'm getting a flight at four o'clock, that means I need to wake up at two o'clock to reach, okay? So it depends on customer needs. So it cannot be one-size-fit-for-all. So you have different kind of customers. Which customers I will have more? Luxury, high disposable income customer will be more or middle-class or lower-income group customer will be more? Which sector will be more? People who are looking for uh sensitive generally, I'm talking as a overall India. So luxury customer will be less overall India, it will be more of middle class. Because the, the high disposable income people will be less as compared to the people which are pan-population. So, these H and Is are always willing to pay me premium over economic class rates. But, but this is a challenge. This is a plus point also in a challenge. What is the plus point? Plus point is, I don't need to compete on fees. I don't need to look, if I'm a King Fisher. King Fisher did not look what Indigo or Go Air and Spies are charging. Anybody of you have, anybody of you who book flight? Do you only book one flight or you compare to websites like ICSI, Make My Trip, Yatra, when you're looking a. Looking a flight option for you, your family? You look only one flight or you compare? You compare. Generally, you will find a significant variance between same category of flights like Indigo, Spy Z, Go Air. Or you'll find in the same range generally, when you look and book a flight of the same sectors, same time. Will you find a huge variation or it is almost the same price? On a different, different, it is generally the same range. Because each airlines, and this is, this is the way they marginal difference, so it's not very significant, it's marginal. Each airlines fixes its price by seeing other airlines. So they, they see that what other airlines has put, then they try to near to that price, so that customer do not have a choice to move. Then customer will go over, go with the most convenient to him, then price does not become a choice, so that's why you will see always all are in the same range generally. So customer will always look and look for the convenience price and depends on H and I. Now they adopted this model and this model is a premium model. So you can, so this is just like, this is just like. Last time we discussed, there are two kinds of customers. If I open, if I open a website, if I open a website, I need to open approx. How many stores, Westside and Zoodio put together would be in India approximately? Any idea? Approximately. Any vague idea? Approximately how many stores I would have in India? Westside and Zoodio put together, approximately. As of twenty five, we could talk, as of. It is thirteen hundred plus, thirteen, I'm talking pan-India. Thirteen hundred plus stores of Zoodio and Westside put together. I'm sure Zoodio, you would have seen at least two, three in your own city, minimum? For sure? Possible? Three, four, at least you would have seen in your city? Minimum, I'm talking bare minimum. So total, if you take Zoodio and Westside together, it is thirteen hundred plus stores in India, total. And total they make thirteen hundred stores, thirteen stores of Zoodio and, and Westside. Make a sale of seven thousand crores approximately a year. Seven thousand crore sales of Zoodio and Westside with thirteen hundred stores. They have one competitor, not competitor, they have one more brand called Zara. Any idea how many stores are in India of Zara? Approximately? And the funny part is, Zoodio and Westside are also owned by Tata Trent. And Zara is also owned by Tata Trent. Any idea how many stores Zara has in India? Approximately? How much stores you think Zara has in India? Appro. They have twenty-three stores as of March twenty five. Twenty-three stores in India, only twenty-three in, in twelve cities. Twelve cities, there are twenty-three stores and how much sales they are making? Three thousand crore. Now I can see, thirteen hundred store, seven thousand crore sale, Zara. Thirty, twelve cities, twenty-three stores and three thousand plus sales, three thousand crore, almost half of the sales worth they are making. So it all depends on customers, the pricing. So people who can afford Zara, they will always go Zara, and people who cannot afford Zara, they will look for Westside and other stores based on this. Similarly in this, if I need to travel and I don't want a luxury, I will go for the cheapest airlines. So here, people go for this airlines because of cost model, the price is high, time-saving. As I mentioned, if I have a, if I have a lower flight, it will take more time. Just for your understanding, can it happen that, uh, have you ever seen that? That direct flight is expensive and a layover is coming cheap? Ever, have you tried seeing this phenomena? Okay, so let's say, take example, let's say, I need to go to from Jaipur to Jaipur to, let's say Delhi, I need to go to Jaipur to Delhi, let's say. Jaipur to Delhi is showing me, Jaipur to Delhi is showing me. Uh, Jaipur to Delhi is showing me five thousand rupees flight. But if I look Jaipur to Mumbai and which is showing a layover. So it is showing me Jaipur to Delhi and Delhi to Mumbai, it is coming me at three thousand five hundred. Can I book Jaipur to Mumbai layover to Delhi at three thousand five hundred? And when it reaches to Delhi, I drop down at Delhi airport and exit, can I do that? Yes, no, maybe? What do you think? You got my question? And this is not for exam, this is just for understanding. My, if I, I, I intend to go to Delhi, Jaipur to Delhi, direct flight is coming five thousand rupees. But if I book a indirect flight, which is Jaipur, Delhi and Mumbai, I am getting it three thousand five hundred, fifteen hundred cheaper. So can I do that? I book a flight of Jaipur to via Mumbai, Jaipur, Delhi, Mumbai, and I get down at Delhi. Because it's a domestic flight, I can get down and exit. You cannot do that. You will, you will get a deal which is cheaper, but you cannot do that. Any idea why you cannot do that? Any idea why when you land at Delhi airport, why you cannot just take an exit along with the customers and move out? The government will call you back then, because they are scared. That if I have booked a flight from Jaipur to Mumbai and I, and I exit from, exit from Delhi. Maybe I would have put something in the bag, something which I would be dangerous for the flight, so that's why they will not allow you. Some people tried this. And then, and then police went to their house, picked them up, bring the airport and do a lot of questioning. So never ever try that, if you ever get a chance, never ever do that. In, in fact, I lost, I, I lost a flight, uh, because of some visa issue, I was traveling to. I was traveling to uh Murukko, I was traveling to Murukko and I had some visa issue. So I could not fly back on Murukko, so Delhi airport says, you go in, you cannot board the flight, you need to go back. And my issue was, I was taking a flight which was going from Delhi to Lufthansa, Lufthansa to Murukko. It was only two hours layover in, in, I had a Murukko visa. The flight was halting in Germany for two hours, only for two hours, because that's a transit. For two hours, I was supposed to take Shenzhen visa, which I was not aware, because my agent missed it. And I relied on my agent and I don't have a Shenzhen visa. And I said, only for two hours, I need to sit in plane, you need to have a Shenzhen visa. They said, without that, we'll not even allow, and they did not allow me. So I said, okay, it's fine if they're not allowing me. So I said, okay, let me go back. So, you know, when you lose, when the airlines is not pushing you, you can't fight with the airlines. I said, okay. I was willing to bear the loss and I said, let me get an exit. So I thought I will exit in five, ten minutes. It took me two and a half hours to exit the air, airport. Again, the customs didn't add checking to me that why I'm going out, intentionally, am I did some flight which I'm cancelling it or. And so deporting is also not easy when you're cancelling. So you need to be very careful on these certain respects of regulatory. So here on the pricing strategy, they were making money, but then the problem comes. The problem started that, they started as a competitive positioning, people treat them as a luxury airlines. They don't go on volume, because as I mentioned, it is a value-based strategy. They are not, their flights should not be full, less, but value is coming. So it is, it is like, it is like iPhone and Oppo phone. You sell ten iPhones a month, my same would be ten lakh rupees, assuming one lakh is the price of iPhone. You sell hundred Oppo phone a month, still you make ten lakh rupees. So Oppo is a volume-based, iPhone is a value-based. Similarly, so these airlines used to work on value-based. So they are not much on, on customers, number of customers, but the experience of customers. Their brand was, it is a expensive flight. And they are positioned against it, they are not budget airlines. So people know that, so like if you have been to Vistara. Is Vistara budget airlines or a premium airlines? Vistara? Have you seen that business model of Tata? So like, just like I explained the business model of Tata, just like I give you example of Tata like uh, uh, Zara. Westside and Zoodio. So any such example you can give me on airlines industry like this? Any such example on airlines industry you can give me like this? What do you think? Any such example where you can see on airlines industry like this? Any such airlines who have two, three, two, three flights like this. Which will say, okay, this is a premium sector, this is a economy sector. So we have Air India, we have Vistara. Vistara is cheap, Sanjay, or Vistara is also expensive? Vistara is also expensive, it's not cheap. Vistara is not cheap as compared to Air India Express. So we have one more flight called Air India Express. So it is similar to like Zara, Zoodio and Reset, they are three. So airlines also make it. If I want to look for a premium, I look for Air India or Vistara. If I look for cheap, I look for Air India Express. So these are the certain, certain branding they do that. Now they had a challenge, competition started in aviation industry, number of players are increased. On a tourist who knew other players are also coming and they are coming on economy. Now, as I mentioned. Their, the law cannot say that only premium plane will go. They can say, okay, economy can also go. So let's say Indigo was, let's hypothetically, Indigo is on a, uh, King Fisher is on a premium. Then somebody will say, okay, Go Air, Indigo, Spizer, they say we'll give economy travel. So because of this, this is causing challenge, because then. Generally, when people travel, they travel alone or they travel in groups for holidays generally? Really, when people travel. They travel in group or they travel in. They travel in group. So if I am an H and I, but my other friends are medium, middle class and they are. Price-conscious, so will I not go with them or I will say, no, no, I will go on my ticket. I'll go on H and I, I'll go on a premium, you go come on cheaper lines, or I will go with them, you will go with them. So that's why they are getting challenged, that now because of middle class and other. Uh, economies budgets people are going, who are price-sensitive, so their margins are shrinking. So passengers are becoming more price-sensitive due to inflation and demand of economic offering is shifted. Because at one point of time, you will realize, I'll be happy if you, it is like budget hotels. When I go for a five-star and my five-star hotel charges me, let's say, ten thousand rupees per night. And they say, okay, sir, I will give you uh one big room and I'll give you uh. Uh, various services and all, so like, I'll give it Tata's example, we have Taj, Tata's group is Taj. That's a budget, uh, that's a, uh, that's a very premium hotel. Now. As a, as a tourist, as a, as a work, as a person who is striving for work. Am I looking for this luxury or I'm just looking for a neat, clean place to stay? If I'm on a work trip, what I'm looking for? I will say, okay, you give me a good place, but charge less. Don't give me luxuries, I don't need gym, I just need a very basic budget hotels. So I just need a neat, clean, give me a budget total. And that's why the Tata's have given a new industry. A new hotel, that's a budget hotels. So that way you need to make shift, because people have different perspective. Now I need to always sell what my customers are looking for. So they were having a challenge because premium services losing impact, people are not looking for cost-conscious. So they say that now my planes are not getting fully utilized, intense competition is doing market share. And my profit rate is getting reduced, because my operating cost remains the same. My, my, whatever is my fixed cost remains the same, my variable gets impact. But between fix and variable, variable are less, fixed is high. So this is a huge impact coming on me. So my profit margins are squeezed, my rising costs and people are not willing to pay premium fares now. So premium model is coming under pressure, that's the challenge we are facing. Now, also the, so we have a committee headed by Mister Jitinder Singh, department. Who looks on a route development, that on which route we'll fly. Because when we do, so, uh, so, operating segment, concept you are aware, operating segment? So like, each sector, how do we operate? I need to see M I S for that. Similarly, if I am a businessman, if I am a controller of airlines. Do, will I look how much total profit I am making or I will make a analysis of each route, each sector? That okay on Jaipur to Mumbai, how much money I am making, Jaipur to Chandigarh, how much money I am making, Jaipur to Chennai, how much money I am making? Or I will say, no, no, overall what I am making money, that is important for me. I need to make up each analysis for each route. And that's why we try to see which route I need to continue, which route I need to close. And that's why you would have seen that. At times, at times on a same route, a fly, airlines fly three times a day. And on certain routes, they fly uh, in an alternate day, because I need to make my money. I need to figure out that, okay, Friday evenings or Saturdays, people travel a lot to go to their hometowns and go to those cities. So there, there's a committee who said, okay, let us discuss with our. Our financial analysis team, headed by C, Gopal Verma, let us collaborate with them and see which route is profitable. And then ultimately, it will be reviewed by Mister Ravi Mehta, who will review on Indigo operations. This flight operation, that how much should we take that call? It is not only one way, I need to get a route approval closure or launch by government only. B G C A can only give approval, they need to give me for, there's a minimum route requirement, so that's why. They need to tell me that, okay, you need to continue running on this, even if I am losing money, I need to run, if I need to run to. They need to tell me that, okay, you need to continue running on this, even if I am losing money, I need to run if I need to run to survive my business in India. So they have, they have done, so they made a policy that every six months, they will analyze operation issues. Every six months, they will assess the financial viability of running a plan, a support. Every six months, they will take a decision, should they continue or discontinue this route? If they want to continue this route, it makes sense for them to continue. If they want to discontinue, then they need to go to the take approval of government and all. They have a right to cancel unprofitable routes because then they will go for some other routes after discussion with government. Now they have a meeting and they need to focus on should we continue the flight Mumbai to Srinagar, which is flight seven J S double six double two. In the next meeting, they need to decide what if if I, how much is my performance in this sector? What are the challenges in this area and should I continue or cancel? If I continue, how much loss of profit I am going to make if I can loss? If I shut down, how much loss I am going to make? Now. They will prepare income statement per flight. Gopal Verma will use decision-making for this data. You will see the analysis and decide continue, not continue. Let's say given an example of this, if you have this example. What you think? So let's say if I run two hundred seats of this sector, assuming forty percent occupancy, I'll get an eighteen lakh revenue. I have a variable expense, variable expenses fifteen thousand per person approximately. It will only occur when I have a, when I will have someone running it. So twelve lakhs is the variable expense, six lakhs is the gross margin I have. In the gross margin, then I have salaries of the crew, salary flight assistants, baggage loading. Overnight cost for flu, what are the two staying overnights, fuel for aircraft, deposition of aircraft. Liberty insurance, flight promotion, hangar parking fee. So overall, I am getting three lakh eighty thousand negative. Now, if you need to decide. If you need to decide, shall we run or shut down based on this data? Is this data sufficient or you like to further dissect this data? Something else is required or according to you, this is fine. What do you think? Can you take straight away, call, shut down, close down or you need to think something? So what further analysis you like to know on this? Anything specific? Any further analysis you can go into this? So this is data of specific routes only. This is only for Jammu uh Mumbai to Srinagar. This is only for specific route Mumbai to Srinagar. So when I say I am making a loss of three lakh eighty thousand, this is the loss I am making, okay, vice versa, this is the loss I am making. Is this loss a right number to take a decision-making or I need to look for a costing theory? What does the costing theory says? Fixed cost gonna incur whether I remove or not remove or it is gonna incur. Even if I shut down, fixed cost gonna incur or not to incur? Even if I don't fly on this, fixed cost I am going to incur. So that part I need to see whether how much I am making from that fixed cost. There is a case study on this also, we'll discuss on that also. This, the cost, the further data, so we cannot decide only on this data, further data which you need to understand this, that. Members of the crew are paid fixed salaries, where flight assistants are paid by flight. So many, so. The the crews are always paid on annual salary fix, assistants are paid how many flights they assist. Baggage loading fee and expenses are ground salaries. Insurance expenses are heavy and because it's a high-risk area. It is assumed that. In India, all aircrafts will have same parking fees, hangar parking fee same, that's the assumption. Which in real life is not the right assumption, but for argument purpose, they have taken this assumption. And if the they decide to drop this, they say, okay, we are not going to fly this. Then they have no authority to change with any other flight. So it cannot happen that, okay, I am not flying Mumbai to Srinagar route. Then I can go for any other route or on the same route I can change this aircraft from Boeing to A T R smaller plane or vice versa, that I don't have any. Choice. So they wanted to take a decision. Now they come into the choice that what is static change they need to do. We are getting a pressure in premium flying models, growth is limited to tourist destination only. We are not covering the tier two, tier three cities, so we are missing the bus. And newer routes, the rivals are coming here, the competitor is taking these routes at a throwaway price. So this model may not become sustainable. Where I wanted to be brand myself as a premium sector only, this may not become sustainable. Like if you recall, if you recall sometime back and I am talking five, ten years back. Was it possible for every college guy to go into Starbucks uh or uh Barista or cafe coffee day? At that point in time or it was considered to be only, it was considered to be only uh expensive or people with. Or just considered to be only. Rich people can go and afford this cafe coffee day or star uh barista at the time. Coffee shops, very rare occasion people will go, okay. Today, nowadays. Anyone can go or again it is very expensive now as we take comparison of today. So today it is restricted area or today it is a general area? Today it has become generalized. Now, if you see, they have not increased their prices the way they have came into India. At the time when they came to India, the kind of prices they started with, they have not increased the same prices because now they realize at one point of time. It will be a price sensitive issue. So at the time they had expensive, now they are bringing in a price sensitivity. So now they they need to take a strategic decision-making that shall we transition? From full-service premium airline to a budget airlines. Shall we become a low-cost carrier airlines or should we focus only on a full premium? Because they have, we need to make pros and cons of shifting it to it. They can easily align. So it is very easy to move from saying from a premium to normal, you just need to reduce rates. I just need to remove the uh luxuries, I need to remove certain facilities, like for example. Just to give an example, when Kingfisher started, any idea? What was the few things Kingfisher did which others did not did? Which make it. Which make it them go. Crazy. So one thing can we say, I will ensure you have a safe flight or it is a bare minimum assumption. The flight has to be safe. What do you think? Can a king picture sell like this? I will make you a safe flight. Or it is a minimum which is expected from a customer, from a customer that this has to be there. So then I am not doing something great. It is my minimum duty to give you a safe flight, that's a minimum. So I am not doing a great favor, so I cannot sell on this. And what did they did? Apart from the models, they are just apart from that, what did they think which had a huge impact? Do you remember they used to give goodie bags to every passenger? Whether you are sitting on a premium class or are you sitting on a business class or economy. Everybody will get a Kingfisher goodie bag pouch where it has earphones, it has a chocolate, it has a. A few things, goodies, cookies and all. They used to give a pack, it's like a kit. And everyone used to feel privileged to take that kit because if I am going on a jet airways, on the same price, jet air is not giving me anything. And if I go to Kingfisher on the same price, Kingfisher is giving me earphones and all. And at the time, earphones and all very fascinating stuff to give. Then that was the thing which people look. So they did something, they did something different and it has a huge. It is like, it is like Kano model, you know, there is a Kano model that. Something has to be given, like for example, if I say. Uh in a hotel, sir, I'll give you meat in clean rooms. So is this something you are supposed to give me or is this mandatory need to give me? You cannot say, sir, my hotel is a meat and clean, that's a minimum thing you need to do. So I may not be impressed if you sell me like this. But then if I come and instead of if you upgrade me, then that will give me a customer delight. Or if you give me a free uh uh free welcome drinks, that gives you customer delight. Whether, okay, that is not expected. So something, that's what you need to keep in mind when you give service. So they say, let us focus on cost efficiency on and market expansion because here I can be cheaper and I can expand more market. So this is a call you need to take. Should you want to work on a quantity-based model or quality-based model? Again, both models are right, nothing is wrong, all depends on what makes sense to you. Then. Operation strategy, they decided that we will keep Haben spoke model. What is the Haben spoke model? I will keep Mumbai and Delhi as the main centers. So let's say somebody, so I'll put all flights passing through Mumbai or Delhi. So this way, I can network. So let's say somebody wants to go to Patna, so it's from. Chandigarh to Patna, so it's like a flight will go to from Chandigarh to Mumbai, all it in Mumbai for some time. Collect all other passengers who want to go to Patna, make a big good number and from Mumbai to Patna you will go. So my flight will be full. So instead of going point A to B, I am taking a Haben spoke model. Point to point is directly from from Jaipur to Patna, I can make one flight, that is straight away flight. But in Haben spoke model, I will collect all people at one common destination. From there I will take those who are willing to go to Patna, that will have more numbers. So these are two different models. This is the fleet strategies, I will put a different fleet for different airlines, for A T Rs, Boeing, different different numbers. I have a single aircraft as of now, so I need to lease out, I will not bought out. I'll look for a cheaper option which is leasing and buying out and leasing will always be a cheaper option. I'll ensure that I'll put a competitive fares so that customers will be attracted to me. Instead of flying empty flight with a high fare, I will make same money if I fly full with a cheaper. Which is better model according to you? Flying a flight, let's say there is a hundred seater flight. I fly with twenty people and charge ten thousand rupees from them and make two lakh rupees. I fly with fifty people, charge four thousand rupees and make two lakhs. Which model you think will work out for you? Both are same or something is which is better in these two models? Which you think makes sense? Which you think makes sense? Less. Anybody has a different view? So we got one more, one answer that less number of passages is fine. Anybody has a different view? So you want customers to be addicted or no? From a short-term gain, less would be sensible from a short-term gain. From a long-term perspective, you want more and more people to be habitual? And that is the reason, and that is the reason they give a throwaway price. That okay, let us put, I will give a classic example of Ola and Uber. Before Ola and Uber came, think before Ola and Uber came. Do we, how do we used to travel to airport or railway station before Ola and Uber came? What do you think? Remember the day before Ola and Uber came? You would have gone to taxi and and before taxi, what you would have done? Assuming you would have called your friends and family. This would have done. If I need to go to airport or railway station or bus stand, I would have told my friends and family to drop or taxi. Assuming even taxi is not there, assuming that, you would have done that. Now, if All Over came and they know you have a habitual habit of taking relatives. If I give you a throwaway price, remember when All Over came, they were giving huge discounts for. One right, free fifty percent off, I'll drop you to airport at fifty percent off and you all started taking that option. Now today. Today, are you getting that option? Today, are you getting those kind of, those kind of coupons? No. Not today, do you tell your friends or family, please drop or you still use Ola and Uber whatever price you are coming? What do you think? Today, do you tell someone that please drop me or still use Ola and Uber? Why? Because now it is a matter of convenience. Now you don't like to disturb others at the same price because you know that will end that. So. So that becomes a challenge and that's why that's a marketing strategy. First, make people addicted. Make people addicted that, take for example Paytm. If tomorrow Paytm, so right now if in your home, if you have electricity bill, you deposit by uh. Going to uh electricity department or just by using Paytm? Or any app? And they are cha- charging it free, they are not charging anything for do that. But tomorrow they start charging five rupees or ten rupees user fees. For depositing electricity bill and all, you will go there, uh you will say, no, no, I will not pay five rupees or ten rupees or you will say, okay, take it. Will you go to stand in the queues at department or will still pay? Will still pay despite you know I could deposit for free. By going to the electricity department, but you, it's just like. That is the logic when you want to see, if you want to look for a longer picture, bigger picture. You need to make customers addicted to you and that's why you give a throwaway price. So that's why they say that, okay. Let us give a attractive test fares so that full and full flight will be utilized. And then by using full utilize, I may sell, you know, food, beverages, entertainment. So when you go into flight, when they offer in-flight meal, cheap bomb expensive, in-flight meals. Coffee, poha or any other breakfast item you take in airlines. Cheap during the during the plane or expensive? What do you think? Where they make their maximum margin? Airlines make money on selling these in-flight services or they do not make money? These are the pure profitable business. They make huge margins. Their margins are more than fifty percent in this, more than fifty percent margins. They make huge money in this because. That's they they sell at a very high price and you don't have any choice. If I am sitting in a plane and I have three hours plane and I am tea addicted. If they offer me tea at two hundred rupees, will I say, no, no, I will go to the airport and take a cheap tea or I will still pay pay two hundred, I will pay two hundred. So that becomes a challenge. So they make their money and revenue and install their services. Now they also want to move to digitalization process. With the moment you take digitization, it increases, it stops your, it improves your efficiency, your cost get reduced. Where I, where like example, if you see certain airports, you don't, you don't find staff. There is an automatic trolley bag, automatic conveyor belt. You show your boarding card, you put your luggage, automatically it will go there. The luggage will check it is below fifteen, automatically it will go. It is says above fifteen, you need to do manual adjustment luggage and it will go. So many places now you do. You do you, if you do web check-in, do you need to go to the counter or straight away you can go there? Straight away you can go directly from entry to the security check-in. Don't need, if you don't have a luggage. With your only hand luggage, you don't need to even talk to any of the airlines staff, directly you can do that. So that way it minimizes the time, you don't need to stand in queue, staff time is required, not required much. Errors are minimized and when less manpower, more profit. So they want to build a tech-enabled low-cost model business so that you don't need to worry. So now they need to choose, shall we discontinue the premium services and entire fleet to realign to low-cost model? So that volume growth, compromising cost which they need to take, that's they will take a call, that's the call they need to take. Now, shall we take uh five to seven minutes break and then come back after that? So we'll take a quick five, seven minutes break, we'll come back in five, seven minutes. It's it's eight o'clock now, let's come at eight, seven. Air ideology changed their vision, vision and mission statement because from only premium class airlines. Now they wanted to go for better connectivity at affordable rates, so they want to say that okay we will cover more area, affordable rates. And they say our fleet will fly guests to all destinations. On time, in comfort and industry's best phase, so now they are coming to price gain. Where they were exclusive, now they are going for a specific price gain. So now their core success parameters is. They want to build a loyal customer base, instead of having only selected premium customers. They want to make a customer base on affordable rates, they want to be on on-time performance and courteous and hassle-free services. Customer will always look for, these are the three some factors which any customer would love. I will always like to have a quality at a cheap price. If somebody says my flight always run on time, so that means I can plan my day and affair very well. So that if you fly, if you say I'll fly at eight o'clock and you take off from eight o'clock, it will be connected for me. And I want to purchase stuff to have a quick services, that's what we want. So customer in a service industry, remember in a service industry, customer always, customer always goes on experience. How how you made me feel good or bad taking the services like as a, those will be coming to see a practice in future. What is EA practice? Is it a product based or service based? It's a service based industry. In a service based industry, customer should feel what value you have given, so when we give audit. Do I give a product or I give a service? I give a service, but he feels delighted by after taking my services, then only he will continue to with me. That's the biggest thing we need to always focus on, service-based industry. So they decided that okay let us go and take, let us go and take a lease aircraft. In April twenty four. So they want to take five aircrafts. They want to expand their fleet by taking five aircrafts. With this, they'll have increase in passenger traffic. Network will be in tourist and non-tourist cities which they are not selecting. Scale of operations will go multiple times as compared to only one city. The expectation timeline is. They will decide, they have taken this decision in March. They will do arrangements of expansion in April and by September, they will be fully. They will be fully known as low-cost airlines, they have all transitioned from premium to low-cost within six months. They wanted to adopt a hub and spoke model with hubs at Mumbai and Delhi. In a hub spoke model what will happen, passenger will get down at hub, reboard next flight, so let's say for example, I I give example of Patna. So Jaipur, so I am from Jaipur want to go to Patna. Somebody from Delhi want to go to Patna, somebody from Lucknow want to go to Patna. So what will happen, the all flights from Jaipur, Delhi, Lucknow will go to Mumbai. We'll assuming a hypothetical example, we all will stop at Mumbai and each. From all three flights, people who are willing to go to Patna, they will club, go into another airlines and they will board their next flight for final destination. The benefit of this model is when I am flying to Patna, my flight will be full. The drawback of this model is, any drawback you can think of with this model? Goal we understand from a employees, from a company's point of view, by full utilization of the capacity. Drawback you can think of, any drawback you can think of in this model? What is the drawback you think from a customer's point of view? Any drawback you can assume? Customer have to travel hubs separately, which I may not be intended to do that. I could have taken a direct flight, would have saved my time. Plus there will be a. Plus there will be a chaos at the airport, queue at airport, which make me feel irritated. Do you like lower flights or direct flight generally? Given a choice, I'll always prefer direct flights, I don't like to get down at airport and then wait for queue and then again join. Nobody would like to go for a lower flight if there is no other option. So that's what they decided to move. This will have intent is my fixed cost will be spread because there are so many sectors, it will be easy. I have a competitive ticket pricing, my passengers will be attracted who are looking for cheap price, they will be able to become my customers. And I'm connecting different regions, that is the benefit of hub and spoke model. This hub and spoke model is generally considered for warehouses, so let's say I have a product, I want to distribute in. So let's say I'm a Amazon, I'm a supplier of mobiles on Amazon. So what I will do is, if I am having a factory in Bangalore and somebody from Jaipur asked me to courier, so I need to courier. Separately it will take two, three days to reach. I may or may not like that three, four days delay, so what they do is, they will make warehouses in each state. So I'll make one warehouse in Jaipur, I'll make one warehouse in Delhi, one warehouse in Lucknow, one warehouse in Mumbai. I'll keep some quantity products already there. So the moment you order on Amazon and it hits my account, immediately from Jaipur I can give below to your hometown, immediately from Delhi or other places I can put there. So that is hub and spoke model. What are the challenges of hub and spoke? My, the challenge, the biggest challenges are. My travel time increases from point to point, from Jaipur to Patna, point to point, my time is doubled. From Jaipur to Mumbai, Mumbai to Patna, it is double. Longer queues, check-in, security, baggage encounters, I need to have double, double staff, luggage will go from Jaipur to Mumbai. Ship from Mumbai to Patna, so it's a double cost. Airports are crowded, staff resources are needed more and both the places to handle more people. Passengers may be dissatisfied, especially business class travelers, as I mentioned. People who are looking for cost, they will never issue with that, but those are business travelers. Imagine if I need to travel and my ticket is borne by my company. Will I look for a cheapest option or I look for the convenient option? What do you think? When my company is going to bear my cost. Will I say sasta dena bhaiya or acha dena bhaiya? I'll always look for the convenience because if I know my cost is taken care by someone else in office, why should I bear on? Cheapest, that's for policy, I will always for convenience that's for policy. So that is the challenge they could foresee in hub and spoke model. The point-to-point model is non-stop direct flights. From origin to destination directly without any levers. Business class people prefer or somebody who do not want hassle in their travel prefer these. When they have taken a feedback, after this model came in, they realized. People are not happy with hub-to-hub spoke model, especially those who are business travelers. They demand that you should have a point-to-point travel mode, that should be the expectation. Now the cost consideration are, hub and spoke model is cost efficient, we are planes are going at a full capacity. Point-to-point model is expensive because it is operating from Mumbai Delhi, this place they are, this is expensive model. So they need to now take a trade-off between price sensitivity and service quality that they need to take account. The network team suggests that let us segregate. Let us ma-manage effective queue management by online web check-in, so people don't need to stand. Let us make luggage dimensions mandatory, so you don't need to have luggage issue. Let us make point-to-point travel for faster and convenient journeys. Use smaller aircrafts, so use small aircraft for faster capital utilization, shortest turnaround time, lesser queues. So this way you will be able to manage both, that was the expectation they had. So this is what we call of hub and spoke model and point-to-point model, point-to-point model goes each connectivity directly. Hub and spoke goes, everything will go to one center and one center will move to respective centers. Hub and spoke model offers travelers which are different price band, point-to-point to the different price band. If I need to maintain maintain profitability, I need to reduce my ground staff. Then only I can make good profitability, the more lean resource I can work out, I can make more money. Cost efficiency need to be written operations, it cannot have continued rising costs. So in a in a costing theory, either you can increase the revenue. And if you are not able to increase the revenue, then you need to reduce the expenses, you need to try some other way. That's the only way you can make money, otherwise there is no other way to make money. Which is the best option out of these two, increase money, revenue or reduce expenses? Given a choice. It is always increase revenue given a choice. Expenses sooner or later has to increase. But if you have, but if you have made your. Sales model funnel clearly, then you can always ensure little. Reduce expenses looks logical at one point of time, but when we say certain expenses are bound to increase year on year. So it is said. If you if you if you ever read a book of Peter Thiel from zero to one. What is difficult? Going from zero to one is difficult or one to ten is difficult? Given the scale, which is the most difficult? Zero to one is difficult or one to ten is difficult? Zero to one is most difficult. One to ten is easy. So they say your one million is the most difficult to earn, for one million to ten million is easy to earn, from ten to hundred million is simpler to earn. Cracking the barrier, making the first mark is very difficult. So when you come into consulting, getting first client is very difficult. Once you get your first client, zero to one, then it's never turning back. Then one to ten, ten to hundred can happen easily. So expenses are both going to rise. So it is better to always focus on increasing the revenue. Where you have no revenue, no option to increase the revenue, then you need to look for cost efficiency. Can this cost efficiency be the cost of safety? You can't. Like I, I told you that as per law, minimum there has to be two plus four attendance minimum. So even whether you are a Boeing or you are a, you are a or you are a, whether you are going in a Boeing or you are going for a for a small eight years, you need to have two plus four, six people mandatory staff cost. So that's a minimum, you cannot reduce, you cannot say, oh, there are only ten people going in a plane while you need to have six people. Let me have only uh two staff, that cannot happen. In fact, you know, there is one protocol also, when there are two pilots, always a pilot and a co-pilot in a plane, and if one pilot comes out to use washroom, does one of the air hostess have, or one of the air staff has to go and sit in the cabin mandatory? Yes, no, maybe? Do you know that? And you know why is this rule? So it is mandatory. And when there are two pilots, anyone is coming out to use washroom or for any reason is coming out, another's flight attendant has to compulsory sit in that room, mandatory. And why is that so? Any idea why is that so? There are two reasons for that. Any idea why is that so? Why is that so mandatory? So these are for two reasons, safety reasons. One, it actually happened in one of the, it happened in Jordan where the pilot was not mentally well. So when the other pilot went out, this pilot go and hit the plane with the mountains, intentionally hit the plane. Because he was not psychologically well for some reason. Second in one case is the, when the pilot went out, the other pilot got a heart attack. And then the plane was about to crash, but it got saved because once it is in turbulence, other people rushed and saved. So now they made it mandatory that to avoid any risk, it has to be compulsory, ensure that two people remain inside the cockpit. Now they appointed managing director, Mr. Prem Chawla. His terms of the, terms of the appointment is he will be paid in absence of profit remuneration as per companies act. So that was the terms he has agreed. During the year, the loss was incurred fifty-five crore rupees and the loss due to extensive business model change. Just to context one uh loss, what is the risk in this area? We also know what happened in Kashmir Palga, what happened in the issue, right? That is the casualties happened a lot in the incidents at Kashmir, right? Any idea what impact it has on airlines industry? Any idea what impact it had on airlines industry? Any vague idea? Any vague idea? Anyways, I have any clue? Okay, that would be one. There is a smaller loss, there is a smaller loss that, that there is no passenger to travel on, there, there is a smaller loss. I am talking of after effects. So J N K is a very small number in terms of travel. So that is fine. After effects of that. After effects of that was Operation Sindhu happened. Now, does the Pakistan airspace was allowed for Indian, Indian airlines to travel? Were they allowed Indian airlines to travel in Pakistan airspace? They were not allowed. Any idea? Any idea? How much loss, how much loss Air India had to bear because of this? I'll give you just a number. In twenty twenty-four, in twenty twenty-four, Air India total loss was ten thousand crore. Ten thousand eight ninety crore was the loss of Air India. Ten thousand eight ninety crores, total loss. Any idea out of this, how much loss have incurred only because of the airspace closure? Any vague thought? Any vague number you can make out? Any vague number you can make out? How much loss you think could be after that? Any vague number you can think of. I've given you total loss, total loss of Air India was ten thousand crore rupees, ten thousand eight ninety. Five thousand crores. Five thousand crore, four thousand crore approx was the loss, four thousand something was approximate loss, not five hundred. Four thousand crores. You can imagine the loss of ten thousand, half of the loss came due to this only. So because of, because of one space closure, you need to travel a lot, lot of fuel, fuel efficiency and lot of other issues. Lot of parking and lot of other issues happen. So these are the dynamics of this industry. It is not as simple as it could be. So here they incurred a loss of fifty-five crores in this case. Loss was due to model change, what happened? Company was not able to pay remuneration because of, there is no profit. So they paid two crore rupees to M D, taken by special approval from shareholders. Now, the company had a capital of two fifteen crore. Remuneration is linked to the statutory compliance of Companies Act. Now, they decided that we need to go for cost efficient and lean strategy. Balance between network optimization and financial prudence, remuneration should be as per compliance and short-term sacrifices to be done for long-term gains. Now, there is a passenger service fees, every airline collects from passengers. Whenever you, you would have booked your any ticket, when you book your airline's ticket, in the ticket you will always see the breakup of, somebody would be airline charges, then you will see the airport authority fees and all, you will see the breakup. In that breakup, there is a one component is passenger service fees, which every airline need to collect it and need to give to the airline operator. You could need to give, let's say take example of G M R, Adani or whoever is managing the airport, if the government is managing the airport, then Airport Authority of India, we need to give to them. Ultimately, you remit to the regulators who are operating the airports at the time. This cost includes cost of airport security, passenger facilities, baggage, trolley, escalators, A Cs, water, any services you are getting at the airport, cost is covered from there. So this, if you get like, it enhances passenger experience and safety. It is always managed by airports who provide infrastructure, collected by the airlines, but taken on behalf of operators. So let's say if I'm collecting passenger service fees from a passenger, from a customer and giving to the operators, do I need to deduct T D S on this? Under section one ninety-four, I read. Considering it is like services you are giving. Anyone has a different thought? I have one thought, they say yes, you need to deduct T D S on this. Anybody has a different thought? There is a Supreme Court judgment on this. On Singapore Airlines. And they say you don't need to do that. Any idea, Sanjay, what is your thought of not deducting T D S? Why? Why you think logically we should not consider? Because it is not considered as a part of rent. It is like you are collecting on behalf of agent, you are collecting on behalf of operator, it is like a government levy. It is like a levy or a tax with government levies on each passenger, so it is not a part of rent. So there was a, there was a Supreme Court case on this on Singapore Airlines and later Supreme Court concluded, you don't need to deduct any T D S on that. So there was a issue that when they should, when you make processing first payment, P S F, they paid along with rental charges. So let's say I pay parking charges, rentals for parking plane, along with that, I have also paid passenger service fees together. So let's say lakh rupees are parking charges and ten thousand is a P S F, I paid one lakh ten thousand. Confusion came, should I pay T D S on this also or not? That was the confusion. So one ninety-four only belongs to rental payments, so T D supplies on rental payments. On P S F payments, it is not considered rent and it is considered a levy collected of by airlines on behalf of regulator. So we don't need to. So there is a Supreme Court judgment on this, airport authorities, and therefore it, it need not to be collected. It was on a Singapore Airlines and then it went into commission of income tax and they lost it. So we clear, no T D S need to be deducted because it's not a contractual rent, it's statutory. It is not even asking you, it is compulsory you need to pay. Now the current positioning is they were enough successful in operating as a low-cost airlines. They built their presence in a domestic travel market with a low-income group. Known for affordable fares and efficient operation, so everybody is looking to their, their flights are coming full, that's what happening. Now they have a huge domestic tourism industry is growing. Again, emerging travel trends is happening on Sri Lanka, Gangtok, Lakshadweep, Rajling. These areas are getting popularity. Now even the masses are going onto these areas. So earlier these were the premium area, area they were offering, now masses are also going on this. Now, CEO feels customer is price sensitive, always prefer low cost to travel. He always seeks low cost but seek comfort in premium services. That's what he always look for. And this increased demand for diverse offering in airlines travel, you need to give multiple options to them. So now he want to ensure, do we, do we also come up with a new model of service model, low cost and premium option? So I'll give a low cost, but I will also give you certain options. That okay, if you add this, add this, you will give an option, it's your choice. Which customer will always feel better? If I sell, if I sell you a flight from Jaipur to Delhi at five thousand rupees, you may feel the pinch. But if I sell you the flight from Jaipur to Delhi at three thousand five hundred, then I will add. Plus, if you want a recliner seat, add five hundred extra. If you want a front leg space, pay seven hundred extra. If you want a fast forward, pay this extra. If you want anytime cancellation, pay two hundred extra. And then if the number comes five thousand rupees, you not feel pinch. Do you agree? Do you understand the mindset, the customer psychology? When you are increasing the part by choosing yourself, you will feel you have made the right choice. So you have made the decision of increasing from three thousand five hundred to five thousand, you will not feel the pinch. Because you are the decision maker here. But if I tell you no, the only option you have is five thousand, you will feel the pinch. You will say, oh, I have no choice. That's the mindset you play when you give options. Remember when you order in Swiggy Sumato? You order this, plus combo, you add this, you'll get extra. Plus add, you get extra. Then later on you realize you need to spend five hundred rupees, but eventually you spend eight hundred rupees. But then you don't feel the pain. You agree what I'm trying to convey? You got the point? How does it happen when psychologically, when you do a buying, impulsive buying, how does it happens? Same it happens. So that's the way, there is a huge lesson on psychology and how to do that. So they said, let us go into premium options with the popular tourist destination where people are willing to give better services, customer expectation can be met. So they thought, let us restart full-service premium flying sec-segment again. We stop this segment, bring back again tourists on these sectors because we feel there's a huge demand. And we have already expertise in this area, we can again restart it. We, we close this, we can restart. So now they decided we can have, we shifted from low-cost model, now can we have two models? But there is a challenge in running two different models. The challenge they feel in running two different models. Customer like, what is the challenge you see when one airline says I will give you low service also and I'll give you premium service airlines also. What is the challenge you see, foresee? What do you think is the challenge you see by this? What do you think? What challenge you see when a, when a same brand gives two services? Customer may not see value in premium, okay? Also, so one is customer will not see the value in premium. It will be confused. They will compete itself. Like for example, that is the reason why I mentioned Zara operates in a different brand. Zoodio in a different, Westside in different. Because when I am going to Westside, I know what price is I am going. If I go to Zara and expect the price of Zoodio, I'll be stupid, right? If, imagine on that same Westside, same Tata mall, we have three different segments. On the same floor, on the same floor, I say Zara, Zoodio, Westside. Will it help to sell or it will confuse people? If I give more options to the customer, will he be able to close the deal or he will confuse and cra-crack the deal? He will, he will, he will be getting confused. So don't give too much options. And that's why they say if you give too much options, people will never be able to make a decision. So they say this is a risk that it might have two different brand entities, people may not be able to figure out. Cost efficiency focus will be diluted and it will reduce operational complexity. And that is the reason why, why Tata's have three different airlines, Vistara, Air India, Air India Express, they don't want to confuse. So they decided that I have a challenge. I have two type of customers. One is price sensitive customers who don't want to pay higher fees. One have premium passengers who expect super service but don't want economy style offerings. I am willing to pay more, but they want superior service. These kind of customers you will get in all life, in all business you do. Take example of C A practice. Do you think you will have this kind of customers? Some are price sensitive and some are premium? Yes, no, maybe? Practically, take example of medical, you'll always find them in medical. Somebody wants a premium service of uh very expensive hospital, somebody wants a government hospital. So depends on sensitivity, you go there. The risk is, if you don't handle these two, both groups feel dissatisfied. So we need to handle something. So they need to take a strategic issue. Shall we maintain single low-cost model, which will remain clarity and efficiency if we have to take that call? Or we want to introduce premium model, higher brand, brand search, higher margin? Only risk with this model is it will create a confusion and market positioning would be weakened. That's the risk they have. Now they went to do a leasing. So they decided that I want to buy, so they want to look to buy one aircraft. In twenty nineteen, they want to buy Model B seven six seven. Cost is coming four hundred crore. So the, the one plane they purchased it as four hundred crore. This was used in operation for four years. Accumulated depreciation charge hundred and ten crore. So we purchased at four hundred crores. Accumulated depreciation charge at one hundred and ten crores. So it is now two ninety crores book value. Deposition system to reduce carrying value which is every year. Now, now there is an impairment loss recognized of thirty-five crores. So how much it would be in the books now approximately? So I have purchased at four hundred. So I bought it at four hundred, I'll write there for you. I depreciated hundred and ten. And I have
Two fifty-five, two ninety minus thirty-five, two fifty-five. After impairment.
After impairment, it will be two fifty-five crores in my box. An impairment could be for any reason. I would not have flown whatever, under which section of indices will go for impairment? Which indices I need to look for for impairment?
Impairment thirty-six.
Impairment thirty-six, impairment of assets in indices. We need to look for impairment and we look for impairment based on external indicators or internal indicators. External indicators when some policy changes drastically, technology changes, internal indicators when you're not operating efficiently or you realize that you not be able to get cash flows out of it. So we decided to book a loss of thirty-five crores. So we book a loss of thirty-five crores, now we are having a two, two crores value in our books. Now, we decided it to classify as held for sale. We want to change our strategy. So I want to decide that I want to put it ahead for sale. So I want to decide that I want to put it ahead for sale now when I want to help for sale. What what will happen if I have an asset which I want to help for sale what are the changes happen is for index one zero five what do you think?
Sir indeed we will check compute the carrying value and we will compare with the fair value less cost of disposal whichever is less. Then we will de-recognize the existing asset we will move into the non-current asset held for sale.
Will show into non-current asset held for sale or should you show into current assets held for sale? Where you show in a non-current assets balance portion or in a current assets portion where you will show it?
Sorry it it will be the separate portion sir.
No no but which side so there are in a balance sheet first you show non-current assets you show P P you show.
Yeah below the current.
It will be always below the current assets why because you intend to realize cash flow in twelve months that's intention. So and will I charge depreciation for that or I stop depreciation from that?
Sir once we classified into the uh N C has called the parcel we we do not do this depreciation.
So we stop putting any depreciation on that.
Yes sir.
Because of the standard requirement because you want to intend to sell it you are not going to use it any help for sale so standard says immediately stop it. And then whatever is the carrying value and cost per sale whatever is coming that has to be lower we need to always carry it lower. If my fair value is coming at two seventy I will still recognize at two fifty-five crores but if if my carrying value is coming two fifty. I need to bring this down to five fifty crores and book a loss of five crores I need to book a loss of impairment so five crore loss we will book it. Now next year so we did this on April twenty-three April twenty-three we classified and put it two fifty. Now next year my fair value got increased. Market improved fair value got increased and fair value increased to two sixty-five crores. Now I was carrying at two fifty so I brought it back to the uh reversal of impairment. And bring to to sixty-five crores that is possible we can do that.
Sir whenever there is a revolution uh in this case now the new carry value is two sixty-five. That the the thing is that already we carrying value is two fifty now revalued as. Two sixty-five the fifteen crores in difference already we have the impairment loss of thirty-five plus five in this case. So we have to adjust to that impairment loss to the extent only the fifteen crore.
Okay fifteen crores so I'll book back fifteen crores so I come back to know two sixty-five crore is coming right okay now. Next year market further improved and I got off three hundred crore value which where I was getting two sixty-five crore value. Now it is getting three hundred crore value now how much can I go back?
Sir now two sixty-five to three hundred is coming to thirty-five crore see already we adjusted fifteen crore. So we can maximum we can action twenty crores sir.
What do you think?
See um which means. See which means thirty-five thirty-five crore is there now it's increasingly valued two sixty-five to three hundred thirty-five. Already we adjusted fifteen crore now out of forty forty crore fifteen is gone so balance twenty-five is there okay. Twenty-five we can adjust maximum right.
So they booked it at three hundred crore rupees which is unfair. So as per index one zero five and as per index thirty-six my reversal can only happen. To the extent of loss we have booked into the P N L in impairment you can never make gain out of this in technical sense. So they booked it so they booked thirty-five crore gain but it should be only till twenty-five crore and it should be two ninety crores maximum. That's a mistake they did. So that's what we just discussed that's an index one zero five principle and index thirty-six. Now they entered into a lease agreement because they want to take five aircrafts. The five aircrafts they entered into a lease and the lease commencement starts from first October twenty-four. The first rental payment will be ten lakhs per aircraft per month. Fifty lakhs incentive to enter into lease payable upon execution we will pay to them. Direct cost is one lakh per aircraft which is payable on first October twenty twenty-four. Initial lease liability they have calculated based on incremental borrowing rate of what are the new lease. Lease liability is coming eight point five crore per aircraft so eight point five crore per aircraft is the lease liability coming. Now there is a condition that. Every hundred and thousand flight hours you need to do a plan check. Okay so if I've taken a plane and I fly in more than one lakh kilometers I need to do a plan check and. Suppose I have not flying more than one lakh hours then I don't need to do a plan check but when my lease period get over of twelve years. Then mandatory I need to get a check of form. Respect the actual number of flight hours now what factors you think I need to consider when I need to start booking lease as of today? Yeah tell me.
Yes sir in this case as per the index one note says will play on the role. Uh when when there is a indication is there the mandatory requirement to do some inspection cost. Or some overhauling expenses like that we need to put that value into the present value. And we have to rec- recognize that value also along with the uh right of use as it.
In this situation you think is mandatory every one lakh flight hours or twelve hours twelve years?
Sir in 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 this case um after every one lakh flight hours for each aircraft at the end of the lease period that is twelve years. Which means at the twelve years uh we have to. Uh mandately spend these expenses so we need to we need to compute the present value of that expenses. And we need to include in the lease liability right of use as it.
Right of use as it okay. So here in this here in this I need to mandatory look into this clause this is mandatory. Because even if my hour finishes or not I need to mandatory get it done so this cost have to be computed today. This is not mandatory because whatever if my I do not even touch one lakh so this cost may not come. So this is a future cost which may come may not come so this can be ignored but this cost of twelve years have to mandatory done. And that's why it has to be mandatory taken into consideration. Now let us take certain I will take this restrictive questions later on. So take the example of lease we just talked about how should we record lease and measure with the airwind? So we know eight point five is given mandatory so eight point five would be taken for all that's a first. Please eight point five okay but apart from that apart from that eight point five lease. There are other expenses which you need to keep in mind so what are those expenses now? I am getting a I need to make a payment of ten lakhs correct? This if I just.
Yeah please show that so that we can miss.
Yeah this ten lakhs I need to pay first rental. So my lease is coming eight point five crores and but this first monthly rental I will pay upon exhibition of the lease. So that will be added ten lakhs that I need to add they will give me a commission incentive they will give me fifty lakhs. So I need to reduce it or no?
Sorry this is a customer pay but the concentration pay to customer in this case we will reduce that fifty lakhs sir.
So we will reduce that fifty lakhs so from eight point five crores I'll reduce the fifty lakhs and I'll add this ten lakhs which I need to pay okay? What about this uh one lakh?
Yeah direct cost we will include it sir.
So you have to include that one lakh also so it will become eight point eleven crores so eight point eleven crore will become least. And multiply by five will be because each aircraft half so eight point eleven per aircraft instead of. Instead of arriving eight point fifty it should be eight point eleven because the factors which are getting incentives and costs that need to be factored in on day one. Now coming to the second question which is out of these two which is mandatory so what does the standard says? This twelve years mandatory need to be factored in today this one lakh may happen may not happen we don't know you will fly one lakh or not. So when you have no such surety no such data then you can ignore this but this mandatory have to done that. Because even if I break it the agreement I need to get this done and I need to pay it back so that is the reason why it has to be factored mandatory. In the case study when you would have got you will get this answer that twelve years is mandatory obliged one year part can be skipped. Because one year is dependent on future circumstances which may happen which may not happen so that part you need to skip.
Sir what is the interest rate implicit in the contract sir?
So okay now. This when we say implicit interest rate what should be? So that discounting which should be done the should be at what price so let's say after twelve years I need to pay. One crore rupees for the overall inspection hypothetically or fifty lakh I need to do inspection cost. That fifty lakh I should bring at what at what at what discount rate so ideally what discount rate should I use ideally?
No sir we should we should actually in the lesser perspective only we have to take that. Interest rate that is called the interest rate implicit in the contract and the less see whenever there is borrowing that borrowing rate should not be. Whenever there is no implicit rate of interest is available that time we can use that the incremental borrowing rate which is used by the let's see.
Accounting is done in lessy books or lesser books?
Lessy books.
Lessy books then should I look for incremental borrowing rate as per lesser or as per lessy?
Sir incremental borrowing rate we will we will look at the lessy books when there is a implicit interest is available for the lesser. That that we can use it for this purpose.
But generally but generally it will not be available generally.
Generally not available because we are looking at the lessy perspective.
Correct correct and 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 plus I would not like to showcase my margins to you. You know what is my cost of funding and also I would not like to show this publicly available generally it will not be available. So that's why practically we always use the lessy incremental cost of borrowing and how we use that? If you if he has taken any borrowing during the year or last year any carrying borrowing we assume it is the same. The challenge comes when lessy has not taken any borrowing in the past then what rate to take? What you will do in this case when lessy has not taken any borrowings?
Then we have to check with the bank bank rate.
Then we will take the average bank rate then we need to conclude so see somewhere standard will not give you all answers you need to apply logics. That if okay if I have not taken anything then what industry would have charged in that rate I will take it and close accordingly on that basis of that way. Now we discuss on this point whether we don't need to discuss the tax on. Uh passenger service fees that is not required it is not a rent it is a levy in terms of statutory obligation. Uh this part we discuss this we booked a gain of thirty-five crore how should be done in in impairment testing part? So I need to book only twenty-five crore gain that we have discussed this part.
Yes sir answer B.
The answer B what do you think would be the answer in this? When spirit of employees adopting lean thinking while working for organization when we have a lean thinking out of these four options. I will give you options are coming here in this the answers are in this option A B C D but before you go to options read this numbers itba. What do you think could be the best answer when you go for lean thinking you know lean thinking is what lean thinking is do you think that structure? Now you're seeing the options like. Lean thinking means that you are efficient management of queue management. Across the board reduction of staff to reduce cost of operations streamlining process streamlining fight operations or all these four. Which one you think comes into?
Sir I think point number two across the board reduction of staff of ground staff in order to reduce the cost of operation. There is a mandatory stop to there is a pilot two numbers or their crew that four that which is not possible.
Correct so except except second all clear lean thinking reducing cost is by removing stuff does not make sense at all. You cannot reduce ground staff just to reduce cost of operations because these ground staff are not very significant. But other if you manage other effective things streamline the process it will reduce the cost automatically. When we move so this Kano model you need to read Kano model Kano model is based on a Japanese professor when you. Impact switching of low cost to have a customer satisfaction which attribute. You think extensive connectivity of affordable rates fall under.
Sir it's a kind of performance sir it's a performance attitude.
It's a performance attribute so that is supposed to be there so that's the mandatory. He was paid two crore rupees despite losses what do you think? As per company's act he is not entitled because it is a country losses or he is entitled only ten lakhs per month. Or two lakhs per month twenty-four lakhs or he is entitled for two crores what do you think?
Sir whether it is a loss or not that the company has to pay the two crore minimum sir as per the agreement.
So if the shareholders have approved it there is no such barrier it can be allowed to pay that is permit.
This is also we have we have discussed on where you are taking that.
Yes so we discussed that we discussed so here both are can differentiate based on particular pet offering. Premium services that can be done okay now let me just take you to. Take you to the emphasis balance sheet just to the Indigo balance sheet just to give you some context. Now if I just first take you to the balance sheet of Indigo March twenty-five I am just taking a standalone balance sheet. If you see a standalone balance sheet. The biggest item in the entire balance sheet if you seen. The biggest item what is the biggest item you see?
Right to use asset.
This is the only biggest item you will see and that see the kind of impact it has. Out of entire balance sheet of eleven hundred crores it is one of the major item significant biggest item. Out of the entire non-current assets almost eighty percent non-current assets goes to type of user sets. And that's why this business is one of the most challenging and then if you see uh. Do we have trade receivables ideally or no? Ideally. In select industry do you do you get credit?
Only for only for corporate customer there will be this sir.
Corporate customers all like like make my trip or Yatra or these kind of travel portals who will pay me later on generally. Industry B two B B two B business will be only otherwise as a retail customers you and I will never get a credit right we will always need to pay upfront. But see the part now what is the revenue coming and the data is in is in millions right? So it is the data is in millions rupees in millions so that trade reserve is coming. Seven thousand three ninety-eight million okay now according to you how much would be the revenue approximately based on this number? Approximately I am just giving you a way how much you think would be the revenue of Indigo based on this trade receiver if you can make some guesswork? What do you think it would reach? It should be five times ten times of this what do you think could be? Generally according to you generally.
Yeah it could be ten times sir.
Generally how much you think I would give you a grace period for settling my invoices to my corporate customers generally how much?
Ninety days.
No for a corporate generally you give fifteen days to one month generally because the volume is huge right so every fifteen day or one month you cross that so that means maximum one month. So one month so generally fifteen days one month you give generally so if you see the revenue is approximately eight lakh million. So eight hundred eight thousand billion that's a total revenue so it is it is less than ten percent of it so it is under a controlling position. And see the profit and the profit is seventy-five thousand which is approximately. And the profit is seventy five thousand which is approximately approximately nine percent of what your total revenue approximately. And after paying taxes, it is seventy two thousand millions. This is as I mentioned, this is the only airlines, this is the only airlines in which is making profit in India. Rest airlines like Air India, Spice it only came once in lifetime. You just see Spice it balance sheet. Once in lifetime, they came last year in a profit, just only one time and now again in the next quarter they came into losses. So this industry is very challenging industry in terms of volatility. As I mentioned of losses, so this is the balance sheet of Indigo. And because they made investments. Now, any idea where they would have made investments? Where do you think they would have made investments? These investment would be made where generally, where do you think?
In government securities.
Okay. And non-current? Eight and nine? Okay, so we'll see these investments also just for once. And if you see the balance sheet. See the balance sheet, the maximum part is lease liability. That's the maximum. Okay, the maximum amount they need to pay is lease liability. That's the maximum stuff they need to borrow. Else they don't have much liabilities much. Rest normal liabilities they have, but that's the biggest liability. Just to show you note number eight, what investments they have done. That's why it's a standalone balance sheet. So they have made subsidiaries. Now, when you go for Indigo, Indigo staff, there will be Indigo. Have you seen some certain products in a in a Indigo, in-house meal is by Indigo only? Have you seen certain products where Indigo does a white labeling? It will ask the manufacturer to manufacture and put label of Indigo. So I will sell. So these are certain companies where you put your investments as you make a subsidiaries. Like for example, see what kind of service they have given. See, agile airport services. So if I need to get any staff in airport, I'll get it done from air. Interglow Aviation Ventures, Interglow Aviation Services, if I need to make something. So these are all related to in-house products. That's what we have, right? Now last I'll just take you on on just a minute. Now the lots, this is the this is the summary that out of one airlines only Indigo, Indigo made a profit of seven thousand five seven crore once in twenty five, that is a regular profitable. Air India total losses nine thousand five sixty crore. Now you can see whatever is the Indigo's profit, the more the loss of Air India. Now, how much time do you think they should take? So there are turnaround happening, there are moving on, but profit is not yet. As I mentioned, Spice it only come once in lifetime, profit of forty eight crore last year, the first time. But then, then in first quarter June twenty five, they still incurred a loss of two thirty four crores. As I mentioned, only Indigo is coming profitable consistently. There's no airlines is coming as of now. And the loss of which I mentioned of the loss for closure of Pakistan Airways, just to give an idea, it how impact it has. It is five thousand crores, put on approximately for the loss it happens, just to say where it was. And they never expected this loss to happen. They were doing a good turnaround, but unfortunately due to this space shut down, they need to incur a huge loss. I think my screen is not moving now. That's sufficient. No, airlines is not private. Government is not running. Government is not running any airlines now. It was running earlier. Do you know the the full story of, Sami, you know the whole story of Air India? Air India was started by Tata's. It is by Jamshed J R D Tata in nineteen sixties. And then he was running it for few years and then government private government wanted to make it nationalized. They asked, they said every private airlines has to be taken by government. So they forcefully take over the airlines from Tata's. And then government for some reason could not run very well despite being government airlines, they incurred huge losses. And when the debt started piling up of forty four thousand crore rupees and above debt started piling up. Then they look for a valuers, they look for buyers. And then then Tata Group has come out of affection. You know the affection when you started something hundred years back and now you are getting a chance to take it back. Emotions came in and they wanted to take this plane despite if you are aware. Do we had Air Asia at the time in India? Air Asia? Air Asia you have, we have in India, Air Asia? Who was having Air Asia rights in India? It was Tata's group. So despite having Air Asia, they again went to take to Air India because that was Maharaja was their own brand and they wanted to take it back. So they took it back Air Asia, Air India despite heavy losses. Now, you will be surprised to know that Tata Sons owns Air India now. This year, the biggest loss of Tata Sons only come from Air India. If you see the Tata Sons balance sheet, the maximum loss that is coming from Tata Sons is coming only from Air India financials. That is coming, I told you around nine thousand crore approximately. So they got hit a lot by this loss, but again at times emotions take over all the commercial decisions and right or wrong, we cannot comment at this point of time. Tata's have taken a thought that we need to take this back and that's why they've taken this back. Only the time will tell whether the decision is profitable or not. At this point, we are armchair consultants cannot comment because somebody is putting his hard earned money. Put some thought process on this. Maybe in future they can make money for sure. You never know. So this is all I have on airline sector and these questions. Anyone have any queries you can ask? Else we can ask Deepak sir to take it over.
Sir, if the current situation is going on, then definitely the airline will be the become the monopoly sector because everybody is making a loss. Then now currently as you discussed, informed the Indigo only is making a profit. Then the everybody will go out of that business. Then one person will lead the business means then it will be monopoly business in future.
And that is the reason if you see Goair just went off. Goair went off last two, three years only. Goair Airlines, which was also a low budget airline, it could not sustain, it went off. Because of overrunnings and delay costs and all, that becomes a huge issue. Spice it is also struggling. So one day and you see now the Jet, we you know the classic example of Jet Airways? Jet Airways was one upon a time the leading airlines industry, leading airlines industry of India. And again, they went back, whether it is a personal promoter's issue, whatever issue, Jet Airways also went off. Did government bail it out? Government did not bail it out. And government will never bail even Go air website which has gone or any other airlines. Government will never bail them out for whatever reason. So the issue becomes, it will go into public monopoly. So that is the only reason I think Air India will continue because Tata's has taken into three different branches. So they are going to take it and in future, as you rightly said, it will be only two airlines if this same situation continues. Because there is a capacity to my deep pockets. I cannot bleed more than my pocket. So till my share capital wipes out, I am there. If there is nobody to come and pay. What happened with Kingfisher? One of the best airlines. Ask anybody who is a traveling Kingfisher, they will say this is the best airlines they would ever travel. The kind of luxury, the kind of experience they have given to the customers. But it's all gone. So if the promoter does not take right decisions, things are going to doom. And no government is going to save. So that will always up and under the risk of this industry and new entrance will not come. Do you hear anyone? So I don't know how many of you heard this when, which is the latest airlines open in India? Last airlines open in India? Last airlines. Latest airlines. Anyone has any thoughts?
No, sir. My idea.
And it was opened by opened by one of our member only, one of C A member only. Late Mister C A Akash Jhunjanwala. He opened the last latest airlines in India, Akasha Airlines. And when he opened, everybody said what happened to this tycoon? He he knew the market so well, how come he enter into airlines business? And they say, if you want to wish bad to someone, just advise him to open a airlines business. And everybody said, how come such a smart guy could have opened this decision? So we all know late Mister C A Akash Jhunjanwala would, when he would have opened this thought. He would not have just taken a blind guess. He would have taken some calculation. So whenever promoter takes any decision, there would be some logics behind it. Because we all will agree, we cannot shift to now bus mode and railway mode. Like I'll give you example, to take a flight train from Jaipur to Bangalore, it will take thirty six hours. Now do you think will I ever like to go in train or I will always prefer a flight? Whatever what time it is, I'll prefer a flight because it will take three hours, it will be saving a lot of time. So now, air flight is not a luxury now, now it's a necessity. For business purpose or even for family purpose, it is the necessary. So when it becomes a necessity, so I will be a user permanent lifetime. Ask yourself, will you ever go to train? Given a choice, you have both options available. And it's a budget friendly, so I'll always take that option. So that is the reason this will be a permanent need and that's why they are putting their airlines. So that way it will continue. With this, if you have any other questions you can ask, else we can go with.
Sir, I have one question that how that Indigo Airlines alone is maintaining the profit? All are going, all are loss making company. How, what is the strategy behind our date, sir?
Okay. Did you, when did you travel last in Indigo? Just any, have you ever traveled? I'll give you a classic example because yesterday I was yesterday in Chandigarh and today morning I came back to Jaipur. The the, so there is always a, in a service industry, there is a theorem. Always under promise and over perform. Okay, under commit and over perform people will love you. Do not over commit and under perform. So if I tell you the flight from Jaipur to Chandigarh will take one and a half hours, okay? And I will reach you in one hour ten minutes. You will be saying okay or you will be happy? What do you think? If I if I tell you on the day when the flight will take one and a half hours and I'll reach you one hour ten minutes. You'll be happy or you'll be sad?
Happy.
You'll be happy that you know that I did something good. I was supposed to finish in two days. It is like your boss, you know, you tell your boss, boss gives you a job of two days. And you finish in one and a half days, he will be very happy. You take two and a half days, he will not be happy. So if I tell you one and a half hours and I and I drop you two hours for some reason, you'll annoy it. You say, oh, playing chalana nahi aaya, then all you anger on that. So their first rule is always give more time to people and reduce in less time. So you get a customer delight. Second, try to leave on time always. So they have ninety percent ninety percent to go on time. Do you know what this ten, ten minutes difference makes a difference? What does it means? You take more hours during the during the day. If at ten, ten minutes I do a fast. And if you see the kind of cleanliness, the kind of evacuation they do in the flight, very quickly they evacuate, very quickly they remove things very out. So they they realize that they don't want to spend time in cleaning or much, so they keep low model cleaning. They don't want to spend time on spending at a ground staff. Their ground staff is so quick, the moment flight lands in, their luggage comes very fast. Earlier they used to take long, long time, now it's very fast they are moving. So they try to be cost conscious. They are not taking expensive things. They are not giving five stars and others. They give budget hotels like if somebody gets a better experience, flight delays, they do not give five star hotels. They give very budget hotels. Just room, sleep, it will not cost more than two thousand to them. Airlines, Air India used to cost seven thousand rupees for that same hotel. Now they are given two thousand, that's the price they incur. That's why they are trying to be very economical. They don't want to be frugal. They don't give much advertisements because do you see much advertisement of Indigo's now? No. And they have taken most advertisement model. They advertise lot many people. You go to see their seat covers, branding of something else. So they have gone into that model. They have their in-house facility, flight facility. Earlier, they were selling other products. Now they are making product for themselves and making money there. So that's why they have mastered it. And it is not only they are only one in India, like India they are only one, but if you say globally, if you say Middle East, Emirates, Gulf Air, they all are making profit. Because they realized where they need to make money, so they work on those sectors more. So that's why they are making. So there is a good case study on Indigo. If you just search case study on Indigo profit, there is a huge thought process you will get on this, how to, why, what factors they have taken.
Alright, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Over to Deepakji.
Thank you so much, sir, for your engaging session and the wonderful examples you shared from airlines industry. On behalf of everyone here, I would like to sincere thank C A Sumit Dada, sir, for taking time out of his busy schedule to be with us today. We truly appreciate the way you explain how tax laws, financial reporting, regulation and business strategy are all linked together when a company wants to grow in a responsible way. Your examples made it clear that real business decisions are not about one subject alone, but about looking a big picture. This, this is exactly what the Integrated Business Solution Paper is designed to teach us. To connect knowledge from different areas and apply in practice. Sir, your insights have given us clarity and confidence and we are grateful for your guidance. Thank you so much, sir. Students, now this is the time to put forward your questions. Students. Please go ahead and raise your queries if any. Okay. To all the students who joined today, thank you for your active participation and thoughtful questions. Your interest made the session even more meaningful and insightful. Let today's session remind us, the I B S is not just solving cases. But it is about practical exposure, practical thinking. And think like a decision maker. Whether you are dealing with FEMA, tax, accounting standard. Each case, each case is an opportunity to connect the dots. And apply your knowledge in real life situations. Keep learning, keep exploring and most importantly, keep practicing. Practicing is very, very important and again I am saying conceptual understanding is very, very important for this subject. You must have basic understanding as well as conceptual understanding of the subjects. Only then you can get good marks. Therefore, I wish you all the best in your coming exam. Once again, a big thank you to Sumit sir and to everyone who made the session a success. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Happy T S days to you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Session over.